At this time I'd like to call the regular board meetings of the Amherst Superior School District to order. As we mean the proper English.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Could you all rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
My second.
Melissa? Jim, I heard you second. Motion by Melissa, I heard you second by Jim, to adopt the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Joanne.
Yes.
Kent.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
My vote is yes, passes by a 9-0. Board reports. Board on education, anything to report people?
I got tickets to the party table there, so I don't know what he's gonna do, but he'll be around, so. I'll sell him.
I've seen a lot of board members out and about at events, especially sporting events, that's good places that people are attending things. So, please keep that up. Anyone else? Okay, move on. State convention, January 22nd through the 24th. Those of you that are going, rooms are open now, Stacy's already gotten reserved. We need to know by December 1st if they're going or not. So you'll be reminded the next three months. But by December 1st, if you haven't told her she's going, we're gonna let those rooms go. So please, plus you'd like to get our stuff in for those that are going. So please, if they're going, 22nd through 24th.
Are you, are we gonna choose who delegate in, or am I still the delegate?
I thought we chose the delegate, uh, the main, um... We'll put the delegate on next month, and we'll choose a time. Any alternate? We don't know if they're gonna go down or not, so. All right, with that, we'll move on. October is also the wise meeting, October 2nd, down in, I think it's Fairwood this year, right?
Trapper's Turn.
Trapper's Turn. Down at Trapper's Turn, I think Joanne's giving an award, if I'm not mistaken. So, we get a prize if everybody goes. We've never had everybody go, trust me on that. So if you wanna go, please get your, please tell Stacy by, probably the end of this week Stacy, or next week? Probably in the next week if you can go or not. Uh, there's also a pre-conference, if you want to attend that, just tell Stacy and she will put that in for you also.
What time's that meeting on the 2nd? I see that's a Wednesday.
I will email all that information out tomorrow.
Okay.
There's usually a dinner.
Usually a dinner first.
It's usually in the evening?
Yeah, it's always in the evening.
Okay.
But there's a, I think there's like, Ryan, you went to the pre, it's like 4:30, isn't it, the pre-conference?
I'm looking at them here, uh, I don't remember. October 2nd, it's, uh... Yeah, here's something. It's, uh, workshop, pre-meeting workshop starts about, um, 5:30, I think. Strategies to Retain and Compensate Teachers, and originally it was that.
It's a pretty good meeting because, you know, I know most of us have been there, um, they give us what they're going to fight for in legislature and stuff. It's a, it's a good meeting. So, some resolutions will come up, but also what they're actually working on, and what bills are actually in Congress, in the Senate right now. With that, we're going on to student council report with Holly, or Brady.
Okay, so AFE no longer has a student council, but they do have an Expect/Respect Fund. I'm still trying to get in contact with who's in charge of it to learn more about it, but I'm looking forward to sharing more about that within the next one. Um, at Grand Marsh, they have their first student council meeting this Wednesday, September 11th. They will be planning their Spirit Week dress updates, and also their Friday dress days. In the past, they have had Red Shirt Fridays, or wear your favorite sports team shirts or colors. Um, middle school, there was no student council information to report on. Um, for the high school, our first meeting is scheduled for this Friday, the 13th of September, um, during Excel time. We are excited to kick off the year and get all the new members involved. This meeting pool gives council members a chance to sign up to help with homecoming decorations, dress day counters, birthday calendars, and movie helpers. Um, homecoming ballots were sent out to all students' emails for Rose Arbor Coronation, which will be on September 29th. Roy will take place for that this week. Permission slips for building the homecoming bomb fighter and participating in powder puff and powder puff were given out. These forms are due within the upcoming weeks. Ball sports have begun, and Erin Peace has been working very hard to have a new theme for the sports home games. Students sit in the student section at these sporting events and dress fit whatever the theme of the game is. Some have already been done, such as Hawaiian, USA, and Whiteout. This is a good way for students to get involved and have fun supporting our school sports. And lastly, the council continues to work on planning for state conference. Our predicted schedule for the weekend of the conference is underway and should be ready very soon. The schedule includes lots of fun activities, meeting within regions, breakout sessions, competitions, awards, and entertainment, all relating back to our theme for the event, Catching the Wave of Leadership. Thank you.
Holly, will you bring back the dates of that conference for us next year, or next month, so then some of us can plan on going over those days?
Yeah, of course.
Thanks. Any other questions? Um, 2.3, public comments, there was none tonight, no one signed up. So at this time, I'll consider it adjourned to closed session. Is there a motion?
Some moves.
Jim?
Second. No, that was Jeff.
Jeff? I heard somebody over here.
My second.
Kent? Motion by Jeff, second by Kent, to consider adjourned to closed session on Section 19.851(c), considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee of which the government body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility to wit contract issue in the consent agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Kent.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, passes by a 9-0. To the office. We're in a meeting in an open session at this point. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to... For the consent agenda, Melissa?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Leonard? On the consent agenda tonight is, um, meeting minutes from 8:12 finance, 8:12 policy, um, 8:21 regular meetings, um, boy, confused to tell. Well, it should be 8:12, regular special meeting of 8:27, special agenda number one, 8:27 special agenda number two, co-corrective hires, also recommend hiring Michelle Macheszi as school counselor, higher recommendation for sure NASA and P.E. health teacher, and higher recommendation for Brian Morley meetings. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Jim.
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Kent?
Dave.
And my vote is yes, passes 8, 0, 1 abstention. Um, administrative reports, AFE administrative report.
I wanted to report, um, a couple things. We did our two goals last week that we wanted to make sure that happened, was that we fed all the children, that did happen, and then we got them all home. And we did that, so we're very proud of ourselves. There was some learning actually that happened too, and, um, we're very excited this week. Um, our teachers are ready for a full week of school and, um, ready for the learning to happen. Um, also, um, you guys, or the community voted to, um, help fund our after-school program, and I'm happy to say we already have 65 applications, um, in, and we don't even have our program started, which will start on, um, the 23rd, so, thanks to the community.
Anything else for me? Um, Grand Marsh, administrative report.
Um, at Grand Marsh, our 4th grade lead teacher, Dana Johnson, has, uh, been working with a couple of staff members that they're looking into target corporation, um, with some small grants, um, if you apply to teacher needs, and some things that they can bring. And what they're looking to do is to provide some field trips, which can be a couple of things, traditional ones where you're thinking, go somewhere, or dollars to bring people in, which they would, they're actually coming in and you experience those things. And they're looking at some science issues right now that they're gonna try to bring in, and they're gonna be coordinating that. We worked with it at the staff meeting tonight a little bit, but also Dana's been working with just the staff, kinda pushing to see where we can do. Cause remember at the start of the year in August when I mentioned we had some room? The room that they're looking at developing, that is also part of it, so if we bring some field trips in, supplement some of the animal ideas and science things they have going on. So we'll see what comes up with that, we'll fill you in more in the next month.
Middle school.
Well, we had a great start to the school year, um, kicked it off with our about 30 web leaders, uh, those are the students who are 8th grade leaders in the building who welcome our, our 5th grade students, and they had an excellent first day, followed by another excellent first day for the entire building. Uh, we ended that first day with an assembly where we, as adults, openly made, I mean, you know, some, some of us fools of ourselves dancing, and also doing a whatnot-to-wear assembly to help teach expectations of what is appropriate to wear to school and not appropriate to wear to school. So we had some fun with that, but really the, the energy is absolutely excellent, um, and very positive at the middle school, so. And we're looking forward to starting the after-school program as well on the 23rd. So, is there a point, Holly?
High school.
Our first day was, uh, orientation day for freshmen, uh, link leaders leading. That went really well for our group of freshmen, uh, with 20 link leaders, and, uh, did everything from big assemblies to start the day and end of the day doing their homecoming games, so they're prepared for it. The end of the month when they have to do that and, uh, challenge the seniors, juniors, and sophomores, so they have a little head start. Uh, we also, last month I reported about the friendship, uh, friendship, freshman academy, uh, started, and so we have three cohorts of freshman academy this trimester, and, uh, it was fun to go in there and watch them, about 30 to 40 freshmen with two teachers, sometimes three, when they had the special ed teacher and they're supporting, uh, collaborating, getting to know one another, a good amount of noise, but not too much noise, so the kids were, were busy, active, and engaged in learning, which was great to see in that first week.
Um, public services.
So, the transition seems to have went pretty well from the Grand Marsh special ed students transitioning into AFE. Um, I have, it seems like they're stimulating just fine. Um, I've had no complaints, and the new special ed staff have been very, very hardworking, and I am hopeful that this year will go really well.
Dr. Cox? Uh, it was a great start to the school year, uh, thanks in large part to the people that are sitting in front of you tonight. Um, buildings were in great shape, um, busing, I heard, uh, some concerns regarding last year where, uh, students weren't in the right places, but it was, it was pretty smooth. We just had a couple of little issues the first couple of days, but it's been, it's been working very smoothly, um, and it's, it's great to have kids back in the buildings after a, a summer where they've been vacant, so thank you guys very much. Um, personally in the last, uh, since I had a chance to speak last, I've done a couple of presentations, I was able to speak to the retired educators, uh, in mid-August, which was a lot of fun and a good conversation, question and answer session there, and I had an opportunity to speak in La Crosse at the, the state, uh, Public Education Network meeting. I had the chance to take, uh, both Mr. Moore and Mrs. Johnson with me, and, um, I thought that was a very good day, and, and Adams hopefully was well represented even after I spoke. So, it was good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Policy, Leonard?
All right, um, our policy committee has tabled, um, the reading for the first policy, 7530.02, staff use of personal communication devices, and we also tabled, um, second reading, 8760, student accident insurance. Uh, our committee, on behalf of the committee, I'd like to make a motion to accept the following policies. 5630, corporal punishment, 5870, student production of goods and services, 6330, leasing school property, 6700, Fair Labor Standards Act, 6830, audit, 7217, weapons, 7440, facility security, 8310, public records, 8340, providing a reference, 8405, environmental health and safety, 8407, school resource officer program, 8462, mandatory reporting of student abuse and neglect and threats of violence, 8500, food service, 9130, public requests, suggestions, or complaints.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion by Leonard, second by Kathy, for the following policies. How long you read the, um, policy number? 5630, 5870, 6330, 6700, 6830, 7217, 7440, 8310, 8340, 8405, 8407, 8462, 8500, and 9130. Did I miss anything? Discussion. Jeff?
Just a caveat, in committee I did ask, um, that we pass these by, by three of them, the weapons, facility security, and the school resource office program, by the school resource officer, and also the sheriff, for anything that we may have missed before we finalize it.
So, if you want, you really wanted those tabled then until they looked at?
No, I don't think there's gonna be any changes.
So, so, once you pass them, just give it to them, just see if they have it, if they want it.
Yeah, yeah, just.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start this vote with... Kathy?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
My vote is yes, passes by a 9-0. Any final final?
No, that was it.
Thank you. Finance, Joanne?
Okay, finance committee, that, at 6:30, um, and on behalf of the finance committee, I move to approve general fund checks number 81164 through 81306, and ACH checks number 200007 through 2000042, and 2570 through 2587, totaling 2,807,811 dollars and 80 cents. Activity fund checks number 30794 through 30808, totaling 5,734 dollars and 36 cents, and building fund check payments totaling 55,266 dollars and 26 cents for the month of August.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Most made by Joanna Segway Kent to approve general funds check number eight one one six four through eight one three zero six, and ACH checks number eight, uh, two zero 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 solid through two zero 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 four two, and twenty-five seventy through twenty-five eighty seven, totaling two million eight hundred seven thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and eighty cents. Activity funds checks numbered three zero seven nine four through three zero eight zero eight, totaling five thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. Building fund payment totaling fifty-five thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents for the month of August. Discussion. Hearing none, let's start this vote with Melissa.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
My vote, yes, passes by nine zero.
Okay, next item on the agenda was the bid proposal from AF Motors. And on behalf of the finance committee, I make a motion to accept the bid proposal for a two thousand twenty Chevrolet Express twenty-five hundred passenger van for twenty-five thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars.
Is there a second?
No, second.
That was you, Ken?
Yes.
Most made by Joanna Segway Kent to approve the bid of twenty-five thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars from AF Motors for a two thousand twenty Chevrolet Express twenty-five hundred passenger van. Discussion. Jeff.
Since I was not able to say anything, the committee can. And hopefully we'll change that in the future. So I will approve this tonight with a caveat that I think as a district, we need to do a lot with the county is doing, looking at long-term funding, replacement of vehicles. My concern is, you know, I don't know how many meetings ago, we were replacing a vehicle that was probably worth a thousand bucks by the time that we replaced it. Given that we get state rate for vehicles, we could theoretically put together a program that we replace our vehicles over two years, they're still under warranty, we don't have to buy tires, we don't have to really service them. I just, I hope that with the approval of this, we move towards a plan like that. And, but also with the caveat too, why I understand that we need a bigger van, what do we need, what do we have, what do we use it for, what is, I mean, ultimately, how many vans do we need? Because again, my concern is in three years, we're going to make, have to make some tough decisions. And again, vehicle fleet and maintaining vehicles and that is a cost that we spend a lot every year, that potentially could fund half a teacher position. So I just, I want to look at some efficiencies that potentially could be.
In, in committee, I asked Mr. Cole to try to give us an update of the number of vehicles that we own, the age of those vehicles, the mileage of each of those vehicles, as well as just a sentence or two on how those vehicles are primarily used. Because I don't know that information either.
And which ones are Fund Twenty-eight?
Okay. I agree with the, the concept with the county where right now we're working with a capital project, and we, we actually budget so much every month out of that cost center to buy, to do capital projects, and even vehicles are in our capital projects. I think that makes a lot of sense. I will say that we are in need of more vehicles now than ever, because when we went to contracting busing, not, we actually are saving money based on letting coaches and advisors drive in lieu of our, the bus drivers that were under the, under us. So we're actually probably saving a lot more money than we realize from the COVIDs contract, but I think we can look at all that as we go along, and as, as we continue to see our enrollment drop, we have to look at what we're buying up.
And this is a ten-passenger van, correct? So it provides us, so it provides us a little bit more flexibility for some of the sports that might not have, sports or activities that might not have as many as like a football team per se, but more than, than what a seven, seven-passenger van would hold.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, let's start this vote with Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
My vote, yes, passes by nine zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda was district administration building staff.
And in committee, I was able to talk about some of the tasks that Mrs. McMann is asked to complete. I don't think it's doable. I used the website as an example. I do have a list for the board of how I would add a position and still keep two people full-time busy in the district office. I've had conversation with the district office staff about how that would, how that would work, where we might be housed. Stacy would maintain responsibility for supporting board communication and agenda preparation, assisting with my scheduling workload, maintaining and monitoring the district webpage and social media presence, assisting in setting up, assist in setting up and maintaining our school calendar, which we're grossly underusing at this point in time, be the primary contact regarding Skyward with TC Networks, entering new staff into Skyward, do background, background checks with new staff, and work with HR to date inconsistency in there. Correct our wise data portal, which is connected to, to Skyward. So every night, the state pulls data from Skyward. We have an inordinate number of errors in that. I know Mrs. Renner helps with that as well. Set up ASOP, which is our substitute software system for, for substitute positions, rolling over and setting up online registration in Skyward, and submitting minutes of instruction to DPI. I would recommend that the new physician, if so approved, would be a receptionist for the district, be the initial phone contact for the district, work on student enrollment and registration, help students and families access Skyward through the family access portal, be the initial COVISM contact, work with district like keys and building keys here, maintain schedule of vans and keys, assist with weekend posting, load new staff into talent bed, and assist with special ed tasks as needed.
Just one question. Does the guidance counselor, uh, guidance secretary do any, any more? I remember last year she had responsibilities that were district responsibilities, and she finished with those, and that's why you were giving it to Stacy? Yes.
I wouldn't know.
Yes. Oh, okay, thank you. So she no longer, or that position, whatever it is, no longer has that, okay? Because I remember when we divided it up, that, that high school guidance secretary had some as well, so it'll be consolidating it over here. Thank you. And those, well, both, those will be job descriptions then?
Correct.
Or something like that?
Correct. And we need to work on lots of different job descriptions across the.
Thank you.
You have a question that I think you can answer now?
Uh, it was just general pay rate.
General pay rate, most.
Well, I did go back and look, in the last two years, we have hired two physicians in the district office. One started at sixteen seventeen, the other started at seventeen twenty-two. Will this start at that level? I'm not sure. We really have to sit down, look at the past, look at the experience, and everything else. So I think if.
The, the range is really from fourteen to about twenty dollars an hour, depending on the applicant's skill set, experience, and those issues.
Is there any more questions? Is there a motion to add a staffing person to administrative? Someone second. Most made by Justin, my Ryan, to add a, a staffing person to the district administrative building? I lack for a better term, because we really don't know what that title will be in the end, based on the job description. Discussion. Go ahead, Ken.
One question. If we do post internally, then we'll fill, if we leave a position open.
As I mentioned, committee, my recommendation is always to post concurrently internally externally. So there is always the possibility that you create a domino effect across the district. Yes.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? Hearing none, let's start this vote with Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
My vote, yes, passes by nine zero.
Okay, and the last item on the agenda is chapter A funding.
We're going to have a presentation by Ms. Kavarski and Emily, and they have a, a paid person along with them. Not only them.
We picked up Donna now.
And it's going to be a game, right, so?
All right, Emily's going to start. Right? Okay.
So last February, I was given the opportunity to bring two of my ewes into the ag room, two lambs, for the kids to learn from, I guess. So the two lambs have a pen in the ag room. I don't know if you guys seen it. We had a live cam on them, so people could watch them whenever they wanted. And so the two ewes had lambs, all of them having to be boys. So I took one of them to the Adams County Fair and showed him and sold him there. And I made the, the decision to donate all of my profit from that sheep back to our project.
Did you, did you want to tell them about the learning opportunity?
Yeah, I guess.
She told me what she wanted to say. So I figured my.
So bringing the sheep into the ag room, I really didn't understand how disconnected kids were from where their food came from. All the kids have walked into the ag room, and they're like, oh, look at the goats. I was like, okay, like, okay. But then, like, as I started thinking about it, I was like, I know that they're sheep, because I grew up reading books about farm animals, and I thought everyone was the same way. But having this opportunity, teaching kids, like, hey, there's a difference between these animals and these animals, this is where this comes from, sheep gives you wool, it needs everything. We had a dairy cow in there earlier, so people learned about, like, the dairy aspect of agriculture. So it was an interesting learning experience for them and me to share my love for agriculture with kids that are generations removed from the farm.
When we first put the pen in, I didn't realize how much learning would come from just a simple little pen, like, how to open a gate. The kids don't know how to open the gate. And that's something that I would think everybody should be able to figure out. And instead of just teaching or just showing them how to open the gate, we let them take time to use their problem-solving skills and figure it out. So we're thinking that we need to get a bigger facility, so that we can teach the kids more, way more things. So we started talking with barn, but we talked about the greenhouse, and aquaculture, and hydroponics, and tissue, tissue culture, and microgreens, and we wanted to, like, a facility where we can basically take the animals and the plants that we raise, turn them into food, and use them for our school, and feed our school district. So we've been working on kind of, like, this, talking about this idea, and basically, we're coming to ask you guys for your blessing to start working on it, and to start planning and trying to figure it out. And the advantages that we have come up with, and we've, by no means have spent much time working on this, it's all been kind of like, just talking as we're learning and going on trips and things, is that we can get some more hands-on learning, and we can provide lots more opportunities for our kids, and then the food part. And then, we have been talking about, with Mid-State moving this to a campus, maybe we could work with them and get some of the egg down here, instead of just in Marshfield. And then we have all the other classes. We heard somebody talking about something over here, and Emily are like, they could come use our facility, but we don't have it yet. So, so we're working on a planning committee. We want it by community members, and we want to go visiting places and see what other places are doing in Wisconsin, and see some other ideas. And then, we've been, we want to start, like, trying to raise some money. And so Emily got the ball rolling with her sheep, and basically she told us in no uncertain terms that we need to get started on trying to figure this out. We've got some Hennison money saved, and our alumni, we've been working too. And I think growing up on a farm, it's important to learn to open a gate, more important to learn to close a gate. But, um, yes, our big fundraiser is coming up a week from Saturday, September twenty-first, at Twin Creeks Nursery, Bible Slack. The food will be grown by our, our local farmers, Wisconsin River Meats will again prepare it. It will be served by our other big kids in official dress. Uh, let's see, our entertainment will be the Soggy Curry Band. Our guest speaker is Allison Derryland, the seventy-second Alice in Derryland, and we still have tickets available. Which I have them. I have them. So just got to find one of us, who will hook you up. Uh, local businesses, what did you learn about that when you were a project?
So when I sold my sheep, he opened the bidding, and every single car in the crowd went up. And so after the auction, I was walking around with all my other people, and I had so many business people come up to me and say, hey, this is a great thing you're doing, like, I'm, we're here to support you through it all, so businesses and community members are really excited about this deal.
So we'll be able to get other people to help us with our fundraising. I know Mr. Cole, he wants to join our committee, and he's got some ideas. So do you want to tell him anything, or?
Uh, well, I think Kevin started the ball rolling, and he said, hey, we got an MFA thing kind of over here, you should check out. So I kind of went over and checked it out. Well, it turned into a building project, so naturally that's why I get really excited. That's what I like to do. But anyway, then all of a sudden, I went home and started thinking about it a little bit, trying to come up with a location. And I talked to both Becky and Kevin about it, and trying to pick the right spot, looking at trees and different areas like that. We've got some ideas. I mentioned one of those to Rick, I don't know.
I haven't said anything to anybody yet. I've not talked to anybody, boy.
Okay, yeah. So we got some ideas anyway, so we've got some really good possibilities and locations and stuff like that, so I think it's very possible. And I, I hear some of the dollars they already have, and I'm thinking, you know, we can build this fairly reasonable, you know what I mean? And it'll be close to high school, and it'd be a great thing. So I'm really excited.
All right, so basically what we're doing is we're asking for your blessing to start our planning and our fundraising, or continue our project. And hopefully we can work together in the future on our endeavor.
And the other question?
Okay. And I spoke a little bit to.
Wait, hang on, I got to get to your list page. Okay, so far I've worked out everything you told me we need to do, I have more.
I just wanted to share that I had seen that Metford has a barn, uh, school district, and it's in our school board publication. It's very exciting to see. And one thing I did share with Becky is, I, as a school board member, would be interested in sustainability, you know? Once we build it, how do we heat it, how do we light it, how do we incorporate it? And I'm certain we would have to put it in our budget. So that's the other thing I imposed on her. And I asked her what her, her budget line was for her ag department. So that was one of the challenges that immediately came to mind, sustainability. I also suggested that Crystal Holmes might be instrumental in helping with grant writing, you know, because that's a really good way to access monies that may not be apparent to just the teaching staff. She has her finger on different areas where we might qualify, so.
And she can help with one of the ones I know about, because she'll know how to write us.
I'll fill in this a little bit. I mean, a typical barn with animals, you don't worry about even, you just write it all themselves.
But she talked about hydroponics, she talked about growing. Those are the things that I was thinking. If we're going to incorporate a barn with both the, you know, the growing aspect, we're going to have to have heat and light.
So do you have any other questions, or things that you think we should research? Because I'll add it to our list.
So just a question on the process, then, if we approve this tonight, we are just approving preliminary concept, and something will come back to the board?
Right.
Any more?
Before anybody would be spent. This is just approving the fundraising.
We wanted to bring this to you tonight because of, kind of, kind of, a conversation about fundraising, we thought it'd be appropriate for the board to be aware of what, what the long, long-range plan was, and working with a number of people about citing out a facility like this, and how can we utilize it.
So, kind of, do we need a motion for that, or they just need to form their own, and start this?
I don't think you need a motion, as long as you're aware and.
And is there any other questions for that committee up there? Thank you for your presentation. Good job, Emily.
Thank you.
Anything else, Emily?
Nope, that was it.
Going out of new business, Adams County Area School District, three million dollar taxable tax and revenue anticipation commissary.
We came to you last month, and you guys bid on going with Adams Community Bank for a rate of one point eight five. This is actually the paperwork that goes with it. And of course, you'll see in there that we have to comply with all the meetings law, we have to have a resolution, and attach all the resolution that goes in there, which is why we're out of it, says copy. And then, once you get past the copy, it's going to show us the actual vote, and all the, the legal forms that have to be cited by Mr. Cole.
So can we just do the motion that's in the blue, or how would you, that's what we're looking for?
Motion to approve the Adams Friendship School District, three million dollar taxable tax, taxable tax and revenue anticipation commissary. Can we second that?
Jeff.
Most made by Justin, my Jim, to approve the Adams County Area School District, three
million dollar taxable tax and revenue anticipa, anticipation commissary. Discussion. We don't have to mention any of the weight or anything, we could, because we did that last one, right? This is just for this paperwork. Okay? Is there any more, is there more discussion? Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
My vote, yes, passes by nine zero. Thank you. Consideration during closed session under section nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment compensation, compensation, performance evaluation, and data of any public employer or agency, body has jurisdiction, statutory responsibility to lit and fiduciary contracts. Is there a motion? Jim?
Second.
Joanne? Most made by Jim, second by Joanne, to go into closed session. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
My vote, yes, passes by nine zero. Uh, can we clear the room? James, go.